So please attend to call meeting of the city council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, January 27, 2015, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Semus?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
We have personally agenda is a report from Richmond with Cherry. We'll get her on. And again tomorrow is VML day. We talked about that yesterday.
There's a lot of pieces to this.
A lot of pieces to it. Cherry, can you hear us?
I'm listening in the chat.
Okay.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Hi Cherry.
How you doing?
Hi, good to see you guys.
Hello.
Are we ready?
We are.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Wright, members of the council, city manager and staff. As the evening I'm going to provide you with a brief update on the 2015 general. Today we have, just a moment, we have entered into the twentieth day of a forty-six day special. There's about two thousand seven hundred and seventy bills have been introduced with about two thousand one hundred and seventy-two still pending legislative action. Out of that non-rob selected about four hundred and ninety-eight bills that have been sent down to my legislative contacts in the various departments in the city for them to provide me with input as to how these bills, if they will impact the city negatively, positively, or not at all, so that I can translate that information to our, translate, or provide our delegation members with that information, as well as use the information at various subcommittees and committee meetings. Simultaneously to the bills, we're also working on about nine hundred budget amendments that have been introduced. The subcommittees for Senate Finance and House Appropriations are working diligently on the budget amendments. I'm working with Virginia First City, Virginia Municipal League, and regional VA moms advocating for those budget amendments that we support and those that we oppose as well. The legislature legislators are working diligently to clean up their dockets for the house, bills that were introduced into their respective houses, so that they can meet the crossover deadlines. Crossover, of course, is when the bills that were introduced in the House go to the Senate, and the ones in the Senate go to the House, and then they go through the same process, those that actually survive the initial process. Excuse me. And that should take place on or about the, I don't know, February, February. Budget amendments that come out from the money committees will be made public around the eighth of February, that would be that Sunday. And then those that they are not in agreement with, those are the ones that are usually going to conference. So I'm going to quickly now turn to our legislative package, just give you an update on what's going on with that. In our legislative package, we had several public policy segments, and we had four or five legislative requests. The one for recurrent nuisance flooding, negative disclosure, I may have mentioned this to you in our last transmission, that that was not submitted as a bill. Senator Locke, who currently is a co-chair for the Virginia Housing Commission, has taken the matter directly to the Housing Commission, and has told me that they are going to take it up into, in one of their committees as a study. So we're going to work on that particular matter similar to the way that we worked on derelict structures a few years ago. The other, the next one we had was to allow the city council to appoint the Board of Zoning of Field Members, rather than having to go through the court system. Senator Locke, patron of that bill for Senate Bill 744, which passed through the local governance committee unanimously, and has also passed through the Senate with a vote of thirty-nine to zero. Delegate James has the companion bill in the House, which is House Bill 758, and that bill is going to be heard tomorrow in subcommittee at 4:00 PM. We may have a problem with this bill in the House. One of the leading delegates in the House of Delegates, he's the leading Democrat, has stated that he has a problem with the bill. He does not feel that the council should have the ability to appoint the zoning commissioners, it makes it too political, and that it should remain with the court system. So he has stated in no uncertain terms that he is going to see that the bill is, if that should happen, more than likely, when the Senator Locke's bill comes over to the House, that bill will not go through our, the next request we had was for arrest without warrant procedures. Senator Lucas carried that bill for us in the Senate, in Senate Bill 725. That particular bill did pass out of the Senate Committee on Courts out of vote, with a vote of thirteen yes and one no. It was on the floor of the Senate today. Initially passed with a vote of twenty-one yes and nine no, and then it was brought back up at the end. It ran into some problems on the floor, and it's been passed by for the day. The problems that it's ran into is the same problems that Delegate James, the bill had ran into in the House. A number of legislators are review, are looking at this bill, and they're saying that what it's actually going to do is make it easier for the police to make warrantless arrests, which is going to be a negative impact to the public. They state that because of that reason, they do not support the bill. Delegate James initially patroned the bill for us, but after he got up there, his colleagues began to speak with him, along with one of our delegate members, Delegate Joanna, who also opposes the bill. He decided to have his trip, he had his stripping from the camera. So the only one still alive, the Senator Lucas's bill, if it makes it out of the Senate, nine times out of ten, it's not going to make it out of the House. The next one we had was the Hampton Roads Transportation Accountability Commission, HR PAC, and that was to allow for an alternate designate to attend in an emergency situation if the elected official was not able to get there. There is a major bill, and I've mentioned it briefly, and I'm going to go into a little bit more detail with you after I finish this piece, that's moving through the General Assembly that's very much supported by the administration, and that's Chris Jones, Delegate Jones of eighteen seventy, eighteen eighty-seven, which is on this transportation bill. And then he has another one that's dealing with the Public Private Transportation Act. The administration decidedly behind both of those bills, and because of that, we're pretty much hearing that they don't want to upset the apple pie, so to speak. So the majority of all of these H-TAC bills are either going to be stricken, carried over, or something, they're not going to go through the legislative process. And finally, on our, our, I mean, on our, in our package was the Portsmouth City Charter. Senator Lucas had Senate Bill 749, that bill has passed successfully out of committee and passed out of the Senate thirty-nine zero. Delegate James has the companion bill, House Bill 1761, and that's going to be heard tomorrow morning at seven-thirty in subcommittee. So turning now to the Council eighteen eighty-seven, the transportation bill that I was mentioning. Just to give you a little bit of idea of what this particular bill is going to do for Hampton Roads, I have something I'm going to kind of read excerpts from, so bear with me. It says that it gives money back to the districts. Today, all highway funding is discretionary at the statewide level. The Hampton Roads district has not guaranteed any funds. This bill will provide funds to each district to improve roadways, as well as fix aging bridges and pavements. It increases transparency system out of the new formula where funds for state of good repair projects will be distributed based on a priority ranking system that takes into consideration the number and cost of structurally efficient bridges, and the mileage and cost to replace deteriorated pavements. House Bill two is going to be the vehicle for how they prioritize these, these projects. And the Commonwealth Transportation Board must approve the priority ranking system, and DDOT must publish a ranking of bridge and pavement projects annually. No district may receive more than seventeen point five percent of funds under this program. So what does Hampton Roads District receive under the new formula for state of good repair? Thirty-five million construction district grant, and thirty-four point five million, a total of sixty-nine point five million, and under the current or the old secondary urban system, went at thirty-four point five million. Can you still see me? Am I still there?
No. You're breaking up, and maybe, in fact, we can't even see you clearly. We'll see you tomorrow, we'll be up for legislative day. And we just lost you. Anyway, that's a good report. She got through all of her stuff.
The charter bill is resigned to Ron Page, is that correct?
Right.
So that's doing well.
Exactly. And did you understand the status of our bills?
Yeah, we're good.
Good. All right, thanks Cherry. She's actually broadcasting from her hotel room today, so the signal is not as good as where it was last week because of the weather. We wanted to make sure that she didn't get out on the street and get in danger. Again, we're going up legislative day, and how about we meet at the steps of the General Assembly Building at quarter to eight? Does that work? Okay. We'll work out the details. Any questions about this? Next item, we want to give you a briefing on the weed ordinance. You asked us to have a very detailed civic engagement process, and we've done that. We think we have a good product to recommend to you. And as you'll see, most of the complaints that we receive are related to weeds, nearly fifty percent. And so this is a big deal with our citizens. You know it is, because you called me with the complaints that you've received. So Fred, can you bring everybody up to date?
Yes, sir. Behind, like handed to. Mayor? Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening.
Good evening.
Just for history, we were here about a year ago looking at this, and actually, it was about six months after DNA was founded. If you remember, the department was founded in August of 2013. We spent that first six months looking at and listening and talking with the civic leagues, presidents, the churches, that would, you know, respond to us, anybody that would come in and talk to us, even the people that we had issued notices to. We were talking with them about what do we need, what do you have to have? We actually had an informal survey that went, and it sort of got the pulse of the community. It's not scientific, but at least brought people in to let us know what they're thinking. And it's interesting that grass and weeds was the top of the list. Vacant buildings was next, and absentee landlords or slumlords, as we've heard them called, were next, and these were the areas dealing with DNA. And we felt like those things we should be trying to attack. Now, we had two, two basic goals. One was to reduce the time granted to a property owner to correct violations, and the second was to reduce the time for city abatement for repeat offenders, not the one guy right then as soon as we get him, but these are the repeat offenders. We came to you in March and said, we've got an idea. We said, let's go ahead and instead of ten days, give them seven days, and really cut it down, because it was a progression. It was courtesy notice, violation, posting, these types of things were linear, and actually, from the time a complaint or the inspector notices a violation to when we could actually get the contractor to cut the grass was twenty-eight days. And so instead of being twelve inches high, which is two inches over, it was knee-deep by the time we could get the contractor. And we had the option to go ahead and immediately cut the grass, but y'all had some concerns with that, and so you asked Fred, go do more input. We said we would be happy to. We spent ten weeks with Facebook, Twitter, email blast, sending out notices through Le Vors's office to get people to respond to us, and actually reached out to the Real Estate Association, their liaison, and everybody came back and said, hey guys, we're happy with ten days. Issue a notice and give someone ten days to cut the grass, that's good enough. But they weren't happy with, we cut it the next time immediately. And so we brought that to you, there was some concern, and you said, okay, that's fine, go back and do some more, and actually get some hard data. With assistance of marketing and then utilities, we put, we stuffed utility bills with a little survey. Started in September, went through the end of November, and gave the people four choices. Do we start cutting the grass after one notice? Do we start cutting it after two? Do we start cutting it after three? Or do we start cutting it after we've had to cut the grass ourselves once? And you can see the results here. Most of the people came back and said, two hundred and ninety people out of the seven hundred and eighty-eights said, if you've given them two notices and you go a third time and it's up high, then go ahead and just cut the grass. And we feel like that's fairly legitimate. Now, remember, one, two, three, and we had grass and vacant buildings and absentee landlords? Well, I think we might be getting a twofer here. We were looking at weeds and grass, but we started looking at the hard data from 2014. As John said, over half of our notices are weeds and grass. We issued about eighteen thousand violation notices. Nine thousand nine hundred and forty-three were for just weeds and grass. That's a little bit over half. But you can't equate that one-to-one, because we issued more than one notice to some properties. And so we looked at how many properties, it was six thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. Well, do those owners own them individually? No. Well, as we scrolled down and dug down deeper into the weeds, we found out that nine hundred and twenty-nine property owners accounted for four thousand seventy-six violation notices. Now, remember absentee landlords and vacant, this is your twofer, I think we're getting here. Of the nine hundred and twenty-nine individuals, twelve had received more than twenty notices in the calendar year 2014. One individual received forty-four notices. Forty-four notices, he had multiple properties, and he kept getting them over and over, and under the way it was structured in the policy, we kept having to send them to him. So the conclusion is, we think there's a core group out there that just don't maintain their property, and this is a way to attract them. There was a concern of, what about the individuals that are maybe sick or elderly? Staff is extremely sensitive to that. Anytime we come across, either the neighborhood helps us, or the individual approaches us, or the inspector just finds out through conversation, we work with them, either through churches, volunteer groups, neighbors, and of course, the sheriff's office, to get the grass cut form, instead of issuing a notice and putting a lien on their property. We looked at it in a different way. You know, one way's good, let's look at it and make certain things are coming out. Of the nine hundred and, nine thousand nine hundred and forty-three notices, seven hundred and seventy-five properties had to be cut. That's a little less than ten percent, which means we were getting across to some of the people. But look at the second bullet. Of those seven hundred and seventy-five, sixty-five percent of the properties were owned by three percent of the property owners. So again, you know, we come back to that same conclusion. For the notices and for the properties cut, it's the same small, small, small group of people that are causing us a problem, and so we feel going after them in a more timely manner, instead of giving them a month, and maybe getting the three cuts, and then looking like the devil all the time because they won't do anything, let's change the code and be more effective and more efficient. Last year, we spent a little over seventy-two thousand dollars. We have to date, and this was a number from a week ago Monday, collected forty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. So we've collected about two-thirds of the money we spent on cutting this grass, but we feel like it may go up, but we'll still be able to collect it, because if we cut the grass more on these properties more often. The state enabling legislation needs to be looked at, because that's where we draw the authority for the city to take action. The bottom sentence, I want to draw your attention to, and we've bolded it for emphasis. It says, we can cut the grass, we can issue the notice, we can put a lien on the property, and for the provisions of, purposes of this provision, one written notice per growing season to the owner of wreckage shall be considered reasonable notice. So we only have to do it once, and we're saying maybe twice. It doesn't say how many days, and we're saying ten days. So what we're saying is, we're in line with what the state's enabling legislation says we can do. And I'm going to show you three slides where I think-
Have we done that though?
No.
I think I called one of y'all.
Yeah.
Some guy hit me up and said, you got one notice and now you're doing it. And I went, I don't think we've done that.
We haven't done that yet, because the code hasn't been changed. But that was the conversation that we were doing in the community. And what, what the problem is, if you send a notice and then they take, they play the game of letting the clock run almost to the end, then they cut, or they accumulate, they get a delay, and pretty soon, they haven't cut the grass. The goal would be to give, and we're really talking about the habitual offenders, we give them two notices during their current growing season, ten days, and then we cut it. And that's, and again, it's just a small group of people. Most, most people are in compliance, and most of the people who get a violation are not the habitual offenders, as you'll see. Go ahead Fred, I'm sorry.
Our current code says we give a notice for ten days, and in a second, you'll see where it becomes that linear progression that we were talking about with the notices. But the code now does say we issue, we can only, we only have to give you one. We have not been doing that. The only time that we have had an individual was when he called and said, I just refused to cut the grass, y'all go ahead and cut it. And that was after we had sent six notices to him in the year. And I'm going, okay, I guess we get the picture. But what we're saying is, keep the ten days, go to two notices during the growing season, and we wanted to change and say cities, agents, or employees, just to make it real clear that I can use a contractor, I can use Venice's people, I can use just about anybody we want. Again, we're coming in, we need to bring in another section, we're talking about agents or employees, and after two notices. And this is the big part changing. It should be made by delivery to such person or mailing. We're changing, we're adding that delivery so we can hand it to you instead of mailing it. We're also changing it-
What if it's vacant property, nobody there, and the owner's in Virginia Beach?
Well, that's where we want to do it, because in that, in that case, we would mail a letter to him in Virginia Beach. We would wait about eighteen days to see if it came back, delivered, then we would post it for ten days, and then we would go get a contractor. What we're saying is, we want to simultaneously-
Both.
Do both. Send the letter, post the property, give them ten days, and at the end of the ten days, if it's not done, then we go ahead and cut the grass. That, that way, you're getting a notice by something on the yard, and it's a placard, it's a card that's J. big, and it goes in the front yard on a stake that says notice code number, things like that. We put it in the yard. We'd like to do that, and at the same time, mail it. We could post on the door as well. And then, once we've done that, then we have met those requirements. So we feel like it's going to take it from the twenty-eight, thirty days that we're running into on these real long cases to ten. And if someone comes in and has a unique circumstance, we always try to work with them.
That's what I'm saying, so for some elderly citizen that's sick or in the hospital, grass is high, do we go stick the thing in the yard and all that too, or?
Yes, we would do that now.
We do the same thing we do to the habitual offenders.
We do that, but then as soon as we find out that they are in that condition and need, need help.
Pull the sign up.
Pull the sign up, get them over with somebody who then routinely does the work, and we put them on a list that says, don't send them a notice. We get them squared away for the year. So they don't have to get a notice and get worried about it all over again. One time, as soon as we find out, then we start working.
But then the neighbors know too, that you're paying attention.
Right.
Their complaint is being tended to.
Yes. And what happens is, they'll call a complaint in, and then all of a sudden, three weeks later, the sign goes up and it goes, why did it take you that long to get to it? So this, this is again, another way of looking at that. This has given you the existing and proposed, existing allow city after only one notice, the proposed gives you the two notices. We're going to still use the courtesy notices, in fact, we've just designed a door hanger that can be put on the door as well as mailed, to give them as much notice as possible we'd use, provides a maximum notice, we were saying seven days, provides that the site can be posted at the same time. Here it says, and you can see where I think a savings would be coming in, at the very last one, is, under the current regulations, if we have to go through the whole thing, it takes five to six visits to the site by an inspector. Here, we've cut it down to three. So we're cutting it on those hard cases down to almost half. We do the courtesy notice, we said we wanted to do that to individuals that have just moved in. We've actually created a thing that, again, through utilities, called a newcomer, and it's a brochure that tells you when the, your bulk days, when your trash pickups, who to call, when the grass, two or three pages, really neat stuff, as soon as you come in and sign up for water, they hand you one. And then we take them out to civic leagues as well. Provide for the immediate cutting of property, repeat offenders that have already received two notices. If you, if I've got to tell you a third time in six months to cut the grass, then you're just using me as your eyes. Now, the next steps. What we would propose is that you adopt regulations on this, and you can do it at, in your February meetings. We wanted to bring this to you and get your consensus, is this is what you want? If it is, then we come back with a, an ordinance in February, but it would become effective March the first. That's really the starting of the growing season. During that time, we do, again, the media blitz with everything we can. What I want to add something is, I want to mail letters to these three percent and say, guys, we're changing, and we're not going to listen to any sad songs because you're being told upfront, here's what's going on. We feel like that would do everything that I think you've asked us to do. It looks at the grass and the weeds, and it also looks at the absentee landlords. Because in that list of the twenty that I said were twenty notices a year, or as Councilman Moody asked, there are the mortgage companies that don't take care of their property because they're in foreclosure. It is the Veterans Administration. You know, these are the people that we need to say, y'all have got to pay attention, and Portsmouth's not someplace you can ignore.
Great.
Any questions?
Very good.
Sounds good.
So you're saying the data shows of the main culprits, they're allowing us to cut the grass, or we're doing it after they don't respond, and three-quarters of them are paying the money?
Yes, sir.
So what is that, Thomas, they're just sitting and playing delay ball until you, you do it, and then send you a check after you-
They're even paying, we charge what the contractor charges.
They're probably saving money, even though you're charging a hundred and fifty bucks.
Instead of cutting the grass every ten days, they're cutting it every-
Thirty?
I was going to say every six weeks, or more.
They're saving money by paying us.
They're saving money, and you know, I think by doing it this way, all of a sudden, when they start getting the grass cut every fifteen days, they, what we want to do is change the attitude so they start taking care of it themselves.
What about increasing the fees?
That's a consideration too. Let us look at that during the budget process, and we'll do a survey and make sure that we're first competitive market-wise, and then covering our costs.
How are we collecting the delinquent fees?
It's a lien on their property.
It's a lien on property, and then when you get taxes-
So that twenty-some thousand that's uncollected, we have liens currently?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I would think after a couple of times, I wouldn't, if you're charging a hundred and fifty bucks, it'd be, by the fourth cut, it'd be about four or five hundred dollars. It's got to be worth their while to come take care of the property.
Mayor, we're charging what the contractor charges us, plus a hundred and fifty dollar administrative fee. Because all the people that y'all have talked to, they come in and say, I want you to prove to me, and then we have to show them the pictures, and here's the pictures with the contractor. That takes- That takes time and staff, and that's the reason that we're charging this extra administrative fee.
Good. I'm good.
All right. Thanks, Fred. We'll bring it back next month, the ordinance. You have-
Let's make sure we keep ours cut now.
Yes, sir.
By the way, good job on Frederick Boulevard. It's all gone.
It's cut down.
It's cut down.
It's not upriver.
That's not weeds, but since we were ugly.
Mr. Mayor, the grass has been mislabeled.
It's not really what it was reported to be, but that's another thing.
That's another thing.
We want to brief you on an item that's on the regular session agenda that deals with enterprise zones. We're asking you to adopt a couple of things tonight. Mallory, would you explain or talk? You're gonna lead off?
I'm gonna introduce. Good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody this evening. And this is just a brief update on a couple of amendments to our two enterprise zones that we have. Mallory's been our chief assembler of all data related to this particular amendment, and I'm gonna let her brief through it, but then answer any questions you have on the enterprise zone. Mallory, please.
Thank you, Chuck. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Mr. Rowe, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. There are a couple of things on your agenda this evening relative to the enterprise zone. Tonight, I will brief you on the public hearing item that is the first thing on your agenda this evening. We are coming to you this evening asking for your permission to amend two local incentives that are in enterprise zone number one. And let me give you a refresher here. Again, it's an overview to request your permission to submit an application to the state, the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, that facilitates this program for the governor, so that we can modify two of the local incentives in zone number one so that they will conform to the same two local incentives in zone two. As a reminder, the enterprise zone was created by the General Assembly in 1982. It is a state and local partnership between the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development and the individual cities and counties, and it is one of the most effective methods of using incentives to stimulate economic development and growth. An individual community may have up to three separate enterprise zones, and each zone has its own geography. Each of those zones may have three separate areas in a community that form one zone, and those three areas can account for up to 7% of the city's physical geography. We in Portsmouth now have two zones, and zone number one that we're here to discuss this evening and amend was designated in 2010, and it was amended with some minor changes in 2012. And we're confident we'll get it right. Let's go around and make some further modifications and just fine-tune it this year in 2015. You may recall that we had zone number two approved by the governor in 2014, and you'll have an item on your agenda on the consent agenda simply to codify the, that zone and everything that you approved in that application last year when we submitted that. That's simply a formality to codify what you have already agreed to for that zone. Each of these zones has a 10-year life with two five-year renewals, so we stand to have each zone in place for 20 years. So zone number one should go through 2030, and zone number two should go through 2034. As additional background, there are 57 zones across the Commonwealth of Virginia. They represent 82 different cities and counties because several communities, in fact, 20 of those zones have gone in, or are multiple cities and counties that have gone in to form joint zones. And then I think I mentioned that we are a community with two zones. There are five other communities across the Commonwealth, as fortunate as we are to have two zones. And there was one very fortunate community, Newport News, that has three zones. When we, when the governor gave us or designated these two zones, each of them went through an application process, and there was a competitive process, and it had a scoring factor that looked at two different areas. One was known as a distress criteria that got you up to 750 points, and another was the actual written application and strategy incentives and capacity for development and redevelopment and utilization of the state program could get you up to another 750 points. The state determines that distress criteria, and they use it based on this locality's unemployment rate, the median adjusted gross income, and the percentage of students receiving free or reduced lunch. Our distress criteria is about 550. And there are only 22 other communities across the Commonwealth out of 133 that have a criteria that exceeds ours or is worse or higher than ours. Zone number one, the zone that was adopted in 2010, is traditionally commercial property. It begins on the downtown waterfront, and I have a map here in a minute for you, and heads out west to Midtown and north along the Virginia Avenue corridor. It also includes the Victory area to extend Victory Village, Victory Crossing Shopping Center. It extends down Elmhurst Lane, that Elm industrial corridor there, and into Greenwood Industrial Park, and that includes the Mass Center out on the city line with Suffolk. And again, this is the map. Zone number one is the yellow zone, and that's the zone we're discussing this evening, and we're suggesting that we refine one last time. And then zone two, which you'll simply be codifying the application and the approval by the governor in your consent agenda, is the red zone and is largely waterfront industrial property.
Any interest in zone two since we've put it in place?
We are starting to get some interest. In fact, I have a meeting with someone next week, two companies next week, who are looking to take advantage of that. So, as a refresher, the incentives in zone one include the two state incentives that are available throughout all 57 zones in the Commonwealth, and those are the Real Property Investment Grant and the Job Creation Grant, and both of those are the state incentives. And then at the local level incentive, zone number one has this listing of incentives here. Some are similar to zone two, in particular, the Business Personal Property Investment Grant and the Machinery and Tool Investment Grant are similar, are the same incentives that we have in zone two, and that's why we're here this evening to talk to you about modifying them one last time so they conform to what we put in that 2014 application for that zone. Some of these other incentives in zone number one, which you all have already adopted and codified, include a mixed-use development incentive and a corridor streetscape improvement incentive, were developed specifically for this zone because this is a commercial zone, and businesses and property owners could take advantage of those sort of programs. You have some other incentives that you will be codifying this evening that are more industrial in nature, that are more geared for that zone two. So our strategy, both for the incentives and our applications for the two zones, meet the respective geographies of each zone. So the Business Personal Property Investment Grant, again, mirrors the incentive in zone two. What we're asking for you all to do tonight is to authorize us to make application to the state so that every qualifying event mirrors zone two, so that it's fair and conforms. That would mean we would take out any required requirement to be in a specific industry. It would also reduce the job generation requirement for this incentive. All the other items would remain the same, and again, mirror what's in zone number two. Similarly, the Machinery and Tool Investment Grant is another incentive that you all adopted for zone two, and we're suggesting or asking to reduce those qualifying criterers so that, again, they match zone number two. So we're asking to reduce the job generation to five and reduce this investment from a million to the 500,000, which is what is in zone two, and to take out any mandatory wage requirement. Both of these incentives are funded through the increase in tax revenue, either from business personal property or machinery and tool by the qualifying company that makes these investments. So it's essentially a rebate, but we can't rebate taxes, but that is how the program is funded. The company pays their taxes after they meet these qualifications and make that investment. Council then funnels some funds over to EDA. EDA then makes the grant. So with that, that is what is on the public hearing this evening and what we're asking for your permission to submit an application to the state, and that is enterprise zone number one.
Very good. Any questions? All right, thank you.
While you're up there, let me ask the facade program that we have, the 25,000. I see a couple of companies downtown doing something. Are they taking advantage of that? I think Club DePores, and then I saw someone right next to the Intellos, right by the C&amp;P phone, C&amp;P, oh my lord, Verizon.
It's back a lot.
Yeah, Verizon. Are they taking advantage of that, or they're just somebody doing something on their own?
Mr. Mayor, that's been a very successful program. In fact, we've shifted some additional funding from a fund that was not being fully utilized in this fiscal year toward the facade improvement program that's been such a big hit. And we are, I think, attributing that to a lot of the additional marketing that has been done up and down the street to let those folks know that these programs are available. And in fact, we also have an interior improvement program that also assists those people that have buildings that need interior work. It really does go a long way. It's a big issue with some building owners that don't have the money to fix these properties up, get them into a condition that they need. So it's a great program. And thank you for the opportunity to present this tonight. I would tell you that these things really do make a big difference. The Bauer compressor deal in Norfolk, $15 million investment, went to three shifts. We were able to leverage $690,000 in job grants and other incentives that were available to them. It made the difference in keeping that business in Norfolk. I think it's gonna make the same kind of difference over here as well. Thank you.
And lowering the employment piece from 10 to 5, is that just to try to capture smaller businesses that may not be at the level of capitalization of some of the bigger ones? I mean, is it that much out there, or?
It's just a way to be as competitive as we possibly can be. Every single full-time equivalent employee is hard to come by anymore.
Yeah, that's right.
We wanted to lower the opportunity, or to bring that additional opportunity to those folks that might be a little bit small.
So are you getting people that fall in that category and right now don't qualify, the reason why you wanting to do it, or you just think this lowering the bar will get more interest, or both?
A little of both. We do think that the, with the improving economy and with the ability to get out and market this program, this has found money. These are monies that are available to companies. And so the more we can get out and talk about them and talk about why it is good time to invest, anything that can help, but in particular, getting to 10 employees is kind of difficult. So five is a pretty good number.
And I'll just add a nice summary there. We are going to be doing a workshop at TCC on February 19th. We've got a two-hour session on all of our incentive programs to include the enterprise zone program, the local incentive program that you just referenced, some of the port incentives that they have, as well as some of the historic tax credits. So we're putting together a panel of folks, and we'll be sending a lot of promotional material out to property owners and businesses to bring them in for the day, and we'll have the folks from the state come down.
And that enterprise zone two there should be engaging our PPIC board, most of that stuff there that-
Nice segue. That's why I put that up there, because you gotta balance with these two zones and land uses. You want to go to that balance, generally what type of land uses in one versus two?
Certainly. Zone number one, which starts on the downtown waterfront and carries west to Midtown and north along Virginia Avenue, and then includes the entire Victory area down Elmhurst Lane and Greenwood Park, as well as the Mass Center out in Churchland along the line. Those three geographies that make up zone number one are, for the most part, commercial in nature, while zone number two, that you all submitted the application and we received the governor's approval last year, is more industrial waterfront property and starts down here along the southern branch of the Elizabeth River and runs up Burton's Point Road, Elm Avenue, carries out to Frederick Boulevard, and then includes the PMT area in the event that some private development takes place on that property, and then includes all of the West Norfolk industrial area to include the vacant BAS property and some of the other waterfront activity.
Good.
Good? Feel comfortable?
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last night, we had three items relating to finances. We had the second quarter report. We had a briefing on the mid-year adjustments, and we had the five-year forecast. And you said, "Let us take the five-year forecast, look at it, and if we have questions, you'll ask." Prepared to answer any questions? We're prepared to give you a quick run-through of those slides if you like that.
Did we get that one sheet on our recycling program, our total investment? Have we done that?
We're getting that.
Okay. No, I'll wait for that. I think that's a success story. I just want to make sure we, we got a lot of citizens that participate in that, and you want to make sure they stay up to speed on where we are and all of that stuff.
What do you see the hookups for next year going into?
The hiccup?
Yeah.
The gap between revenues and expenditures. And that gap right now is about 14, 15 cents on the tax rate. And if you recall, two weeks ago, we, I covered this last night, we had a list of new items in the budget and some question marks. We don't have all the question marks filled in at this point in time. We're still early in the budget process, but we're gonna keep bringing the budget back to you every Monday that you have a meeting until the end. The prospects, as you look forward five years, you can do a lot of prediction based on past trends and based on what is happening with the national economies. We know two expenditures that we're facing two and three years out, such as VRS. Several years ago, when the Great Recession hit, VRS allowed local governments to opt on a different payment plan and to ease the amount of contribution that the local government would make to VRS. And so consequently, we know that we'll have increased costs in future years. What are the magnitude of that, Carol?
It's in the several million dollars a year because our rate is gonna, we're paying a lower percentage of the rate, just like the state, we have to increase it. Every two years, the VRS sets a biennium rate for the city's VRS rates, and we're gonna have to increase it until we get to 100% of the normal cost.
Speaking of retirement, how is our investment doing?
Oh, it's doing good. It's double-digit returns. We get, we've started giving a monthly report on the returns to the retirement board, and we'll send that to you, too. We're due to have our investment advisors come in next month in February and give their quarterly report. And that's when the retirement board looks at whether there's the right mix and whether or not the mix needs to be reset as far as investments are concerned. So we're in double digits, and let me send that to you.
All right, all right. Good job.
That'll be good.
Okay. Anything else, Jim?
Okay.
Yep. All right, liaison reports.
Councilmembers, just before you go to liaison reports, you have before you a copy of a resolution that's on your agenda for tonight. I just wanted to bring your attention to the "Now Therefore" paragraph. It's highlighted the 2015. There was a typo that was online. We have made the correction online, so it does have the 2015 on there. But in case we weren't able to, I provided you the copy. So when you went to adopt it, you can adopt it as is because it has the correction.
Okay. Very good. Liaison?
I got fab if you want.
Go for it.
Let somebody first. Okay. Military affairs. Just to remind you all, we were, Portsmouth has been authorized by Congress again as an official Coast Guard city. We got the letter. That is a five-year designation, so we're excited about that. And because of that, the Coast Guard Bark Eagle will be coming back to the city before the end of the year. Don't know when, but we'll certainly have more information on that. A Coast Guard Weekend Celebration Committee has been put together to include a lot of Coast Guard folks, and that's being chaired by Margaret Thorn, so we'll have more information there. The Memorial Day Parade, Grand Marshall, has not been announced yet, but I will tell you for your calendar purposes, parade has been moved up to 10:00 a.m. instead of 11:00. Evidently, there was some issue with the bands getting, allowing the bands to perform earlier in the day when it's not so hot. It also gives them time to participate in our event and others later in the day, so the parade will be moved to 10:00 a.m. And the Chamber of Commerce is moving- And the Chamber of Commerce is moving the Military Citizen of the Year banquet to Portsmouth for the first time, and it will be at the Renaissance in October. And that's a huge 500, 600-person event that the Chamber puts on every year. Switching gears to EDA. EDA's been talking and solidified the agreements of the property across the street where the police chief's office used to be, so they'll have that property available and for sale. We just appointed Ms. Jiggetz and Mr. Hines to the EDA, and they've now turned up for their very first meeting. PPIC met this morning, and there are two very active folks with Port Authority working with PPIC, and there was a lot of discussion this morning about the BASF property and this incentive zone. As far as the port is concerned, you all know that there's renewed activity at PMT. Chuck Whitney and I have made inroads to a gal named Sarah McCoy, who is the legislative liaison for the Port of Virginia, and she's keeping in close touch and keeping us informed on what's going on. My intention is to start going to the actual monthly Port Authority meetings. I did not get to the one today that was right after the PPIC meeting, but that is my intent. And...
Do they still have a rep coming to our PPIC meeting?
Two.
Okay.
Two. Both their economic development director and their legislative affairs person, both, which is great. On the Personnel Committee, the very large Personnel Committee of Councilman Edmonds and I have had our first meeting. You all know we have already scheduled the appointee evaluations for all of our appointees in the month of June. We are also working and will bring back to the council for your approval a new and improved and revised appointee evaluation form. We think we found a good one to emulate, or a better one than what we had. And we have one item that we would like your attention to at tonight's meeting. We had a chat with Bob Baldwin because we have an issue with the Downtown Design Committee. There were some issues for the last few months about quorums and whether that was going to continue. And yes, it must continue in its current form until and unless we change the zoning in that area. And we have an architect, Mr. Ian Vaughn, whose term expires the 31st of this month, and we need to reappoint him tonight or they won't have a quorum. You know, that is one of those boards that has folks that have to be of certain professions, and he is the architect for that board and is eligible for reappointment. So I'd like to make that motion tonight with your concurrence.
Okay. We'll be able to do that. Any other liaison reports? Yes, sir.
Yes, the minority and women business enterprise. I spoke with Lee Brazil, a part of Transformation Consulting, and they are in the process of submitting a draft for the disparity study. And so we'll be getting that here soon. Also, that's going to require that council has some type of legal review of that document before it is actually voted on, and it may require outside counsel to provide that type of legal review.
Okay. Our folks can't do that, or is it...
Um...
Probably want to get somebody specializing in the area?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we had an update from them before the end of the year last year, and they mentioned that they would get that draft to us. I thought this month, right? Are they still on schedule for January?
I don't know if it'd be by the end of this month, but February.
Okay.
What kind of specialty is needed that our legal staff couldn't do it?
Well, if Mr. Wilson is the legal contact that we're speaking of, when we did it at the school board level, he didn't review that. There was outside counsel hired for that.
His recommendation?
I know he didn't review it. Whether it was his recommendation or not, he did not review it. And that's an area that is open to litigation if it is not properly legally put in place.
Bill, I would think we would let him at least...
Please look at it.
...give us his opinion on it, since he's our city attorney.
I'd rather have it reviewed by persons who are in favor of minority and women business contracting from a legal perspective.
Well...
We got one right there.
I was the legal liaison that initially brought the disparity study to council. I don't know who Mr. Wilson would assign that to, but it was assigned to me previously. And I did ask for, I guess, a copy of where we are now, the initial report. So I can't say that Mr. Wilson will assign it to me, but I can say that I have worked on it in the past and would be more than happy to continue to do so with Mr. Wilson's approval.
I don't think we need to be spending outside money if we can do it in-house.
Well, when we get that draft, we do need to take a serious look at that, because you don't want to... Not saying you're not in that area of expertise, but we need to make sure that we're not going to open outside. Hopefully, the organization with the... Aren't they the same people that did the school board ones?
Right, right.
So they ought to...
They are. It should have been tight.
Right. It should be pretty tight, but still...
Right, and that was the whole point of the initial presentation to council that I did, was talking about the importance of the disparity study and the fact that this is subject to strict scrutiny. So however council or Mr. and/or Mr. Wilson wants to handle it, I'm sure we can get it done.
Okay. Yep.
What do you think the difference in the school board and the one with council? What's the difference?
Well, the legal counsel that you're speaking of that...
What I'm saying, of the verbiage of the one that we're getting from this...
Right.
You don't know yet.
Oh, you don't know yet.
But I would recommend that. Let's cross that bridge when we get there.
Okay.
Okay. Because we're trying to prejudge the study, and we don't have the study yet. So I would recommend, let's get the study. And once you get the study, let's take each bridge as we get to that bridge.
Let me answer the question that was... The legal counsel that you're speaking of, as far as management, Levy's MGT of America that's doing the study, they have legal counsel, very an expert in that area. Actually, he has successfully argued similar studies before the Fourth Circuit in one. And so that's their side. Theirs is tight, as you said, but they're not the city's legal advisor.
But what I'm saying is, the disparity study the school board getting and the one that the city's getting, is there going to be a big difference?
Well, it's one thing the study, but then the policy that's going to come out of that.
Policy because one's the school and the city.
Gotcha.
Probably about $25,000 difference.
Well, if you had come on board with us when we were...
That's right. That's true.
All right. Good point.
And anything else on liaisons? Okay.
We need a closed session.
Yeah, okay. And before we go in, I do want to just state that last week after our town hall meeting at Wilson, I left and went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Washington, D.C. It was once again well-attended by the mayors throughout the country. There was 50 new mayors this year, which was a real alarming number for newcomers and quite a few from the West Coast. California had quite a few new mayors that came out. But the conversations was just off the charts when it dealt with community policing. As you know, the president has asked Commissioner Ramsey from Philadelphia, who used to be the police chief in D.C., he's got a task force that he's heading up with... I forget the lady's name that worked for Janet Reno when she was in the Attorney General's office, but they're working together with a large group of folks throughout the country to put this report together, this due on the president's desk, I think by March 1st. And they were talking about a lot of things, and it was really encouraging, a lot of the things that they talked about that they'll be recommending, or some of the things that we're already doing here in Portsmouth, the whole policing, going out to civic leagues and reporting out, and police walking the streets and interfacing with the neighbors and the kids and everybody knowing the police. And it just seems like that's a huge concern, because a lot of our policing is not going in that direction. A lot of people are feeling that the police only are showing up when there's something happens. And so... And kudos is, in fact, I checked pilot online while I was in D.C., and I saw there was a nice article on Ed Hargis, our police chief, that was kind of weird. Both of those things kind of coinciding, but it's good to see some of the recommendations and the things that they're going to be submitting to the president, or some of the things that we're doing here. One of the things that we did talk about, and I specifically asked him about, is the diversification of our police and fire, which all of us are having problems with. And he just point-blank said, you know, us not sending our police officers and fire to elementary schools and all that for years has had a major toll. And he thinks a lot of these cities that are in the position that we're in, that don't have the diversification, need to go out and get some professional help. You need people to come in, because unless we're talking to kids at the elementary school level and using our Commonwealth attorney, our sheriff's office, and everybody doing that, it is not going to change. You're going to continue to have graduations with... And I mean, I tell them about the ones, I speak at each one of ours every year, there's either one or two women, one or two blacks, and, you know, that's got to change. And until we change that, until we make sure that our workforces are looking like the communities that we're serving, I mean, he claims it's going to still be a major problem. So he says, "Quite a few cities need to consider getting some professional help, whether it's professional marketers, something to getting the citizens and the kids thinking when they see the police or they see a fire person, they just don't always think something negative or bad or, oh, something happened." And that's the worst thing you want with a third grader and, you know, because most people... Chief Ramsey stood up and talked about him growing up in Chicago, and it wasn't very popular for a black kid in Chicago to say he wanted to be a cop. And, you know, because of the negative tone and those things, and it was just that uniform, that presence of respect in the community that most kids can relate to and kind of get fascinated with. I mean, you got to do and put a full-court press on stuff like that. And I don't know how much we do. I know I go in our schools a lot, and I do see our fire and our policing there. I don't know at what levels and whether or not there's a targeted program that we have there. If we don't, we probably need to look at something a little bit more specific, a little bit more targeted, because you do... Especially when it comes to race relations and things like that. If we're not targeting and making sure that our workforce look like the people that we're serving, you're going to always have that whole us and them thing. So there was a huge conversation on that. I got something else, but I see you're raising your hand. You want to speak?
I was just curious. What you're saying is exactly true. Has a plan been submitted to the city in regards to how the city is going to move forward with diversifying the police and fire department?
I don't know if we've ever had a plan. I know we've in the last, well, the four years I've been here, and I think with the last manager and the last fire chief, we were really hounding on those minority numbers. I think you might have asked one year, and the chief didn't know the numbers, which was somewhat embarrassing, and had to get back to us. So that kind of raised a red flag. But our fire department have a Women in Fire Conference every year that I speak to, and they come from all over the country, and they get real high marks. I mean, we're talking California, Phoenix, Arizona. Those folks are coming here, and they really applaud what we're doing in that area. And I think maybe something like our Women in Fire to do something on a more targeted scale with our elementary kids, with our police and fire, might be something we need to look at.
Has a plan been submitted as far as how the city will proceed in correcting that?
Let me do this.
Sure.
Okay. We're scheduled. It's already on the work session agenda for next month, one of the sets of meetings to have a police chief's report. Well, in that report, we'll cover the recruiting for both fire and police, so that you know exactly what we're doing. So stay tuned for next month, and we'll bring you the details of what we do in the way of recruiting, how effective it is, what's happening, also with the chief's report with the statistics over the last reporting period.
Okay. And also... Oh, yes, sir, Dotwood.
My question is, do we...
I made a question.
Don't brush me off like that. My question is, do we have a plan?
We do. We have a recruiting plan.
So we actually have a document, a plan in place?
We will present that to...
That's not what I'm asking you. I'm not asking about your presentation. I'm just asking, do you have a plan in place for diversifying the police and fire department?
We have a plan in place for diversifying the whole workforce, because we're not just...
That's not what I'm asking.
You're targeting two pieces.
I'm talking about the police, because that's a specific federal issue that many of the cities have faced, and I think Portsmouth has too. So is it a specific plan we have in place?
We... Yes, sir. And what I like...
No, I'm not talking about overall recruitment. I'm saying...
I hear your question. You're not hearing my answer. May I answer your question, please? And that question, I'm going to tell you, we will present that plan to you at the February meeting. I don't think I can make it...
No, I asked you... I just asked you, do we have a plan in place to recruit?
And I said, "Yes, sir."
You said, "We have a plan in place to recruit minorities in the workforce in general, not for police and fire department." That's what I asked you.
And I said, "Yes, sir."
Okay. That is a national-specific. That's what the president, the attorney general, and they're all talking about, something more specific. And I think that's what the chief or the commissioner was talking about, going out, getting outside help if you don't think what you got in place is working.
He said, "You're trying to get a workforce to match the community." Correct? All right. If you take our overall workforce, I'm pretty sure it matches our community, our overall workforce, from the janitor to the Commonwealth attorney. I think our blend of minority, women, men are pretty much in line.
But that's not the issue. The issue is with the actual police and fire.
Fire and police, yeah.
Those are the people that are in the communities when we're experiencing some of our most traumatic experiences in life, whether it's crime or fire or something like that. And when you don't have people responding to those calls that relate to the people that they're serving to, it creates an inherent problem. And I think that's what they're talking about, having that responder mimic the communities that they are. So it's not the overall workforce. It is targeted to police and fire. But let's wait for your report, and then let's see, based on what he presented to us, whether or not we do something.
I don't care if you're white, black, green, yellow, purple. You've got to be sensitive to the people that you respond to. And so, you know, diversity doesn't start with skin color. It starts with the core of the individual and the professionalism of the individual. And we've got professionals, and please don't overlook that. I don't care if they're... What race they are, they are first professionals. And they give their time, and they give their lives, they put their life in harm's way to serve this community, and they should be respected for that.
And I think training trumps everything.
Right. But the issue... Let me respond for... You're exactly right, but some of the conversations that mayors, even in this region, when Ferguson and some of those other things happened, and we asked ourselves, could it happen in our cities? And it wasn't many that said, "No, it couldn't happen."
You know, well...
And hold it, Johnny. Okay. And that is a scary point, if you have things like that in your city and you know the potential of something like that happening, and you're not doing something about it, and we're just saying, "We just hope it doesn't happen here." And, you know, and that wasn't a... Go ahead.
Yeah, no. That sounds good, what you're saying emotionally, but the court cases don't pivot on what you're talking about. Those cases have pivoted on racial discrimination. And so that sounds all well and good, and I don't think what you're talking about is just limited to one certain group. But what we're talking about is a diversification of the workforce. Hard work, the effort they put in, that's not the issue. The issue is, are we hiring on a basis that we're not discriminating against certain groups? And do we have a plan in place? And that plan shouldn't come out of some just off-the-top-of-the-head endeavor to do it, but it should have come out of some type of study that's directing us to diversify the workforce. And so when I said, "Do we have a plan," I'm curious, our next work, we have a document in place that we're working towards meeting some type of goals that we've had some under utilization in certain areas?
Not only do we have a plan, but we have a procedure in place to make sure that we know the... All the ethnicity of all of our applicants, plus the gender. And ladies and gentlemen, I get up every day thinking about situations like Ferguson, and so does our police department, so does our fire department. This is what we do. You go to your work... You go to your work, we go to our work, we take our job seriously. And I take very seriously, first, professionalism and training, and I take very seriously diversity. And diversity, you look around this room, and you look at the people in this room, first, they're professionals. Second, you have a mixture of both men and women, and blacks and whites, and blends, and leadership positions in this city. And I don't think that you need, or that I need to apologize for that. They're really good. They are very good.
Because, well, it kind of hits what Councilman Moody said, goes back to training. And I'm pretty sure Chief Barfield, he don't look at the person, he puts them through the rigorous training, and whoever comes out, the cream rises to the top. And far as, I'm pretty sure Chief Hargus says the same thing. So that, that part, I don't, I don't question.
Well, you know, if my house is on fire, I don't care who comes in. I, I want trained personnel, I don't care if they are, are black with pink polka dots or, or white with green polka dots, I want trained fire people, I want trained police officers. And I, I certainly appreciate that it should, should be diversity on both organizations, but I, once again, I think training trumps everything.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I think we're also forgetting that we do have the Civil Service Commission, that entire process in place. You've got three commissioners. And ultimately, any police or fire applicant has to pass the civil service exam. And then from there, their background is taken and completely vetted by our police and fire. And then you have your commissioners that go ahead and deem someone eligible or ineligible. So there's a whole nother process behind getting folks all the way to where they actually can be selected. So ultimately, you've got to pass that exam. And we had the Department of Justice actually come in and tell us that we were doing our exam for police correctly. And then they came in and examined the fire department, that process, and they determined there was a problem. And we went ahead and entered into a consent decree, and over the course of several years, got in compliance. And we now have a system for fire that has been vetted by the Department of Justice and approved. And so we've been able to increase and diversify by doing that. But ultimately, the DOJ reviewed our police process and determined that there was no, no disparity or discrimination happening. I don't know if that's helpful, but...
No, actually, yeah, that's very helpful.
At what stage, at what stage did they make that conclusion?
At what stage? They came through and went through our entire process of how we, what exams we used, because we use an outside firm doing that. And then from there, you know, whether or not they did the physical agility exam, they looked at every process, every step of the process, and determined that there was no discrimination or no disparate impact, that was the right term, happening in the police process. But ultimately, they did file, file suit against us in federal court with regard to our process and the fire department, and we entered into a consent decree with the Department of Justice and worked with them. And I personally worked on that from 2012, or 2011 to 2013, when we were finished. And the Department of Justice dismissed the case to get our affairs in order, so that we did not have a process in the fire department that resulted in any disparate impact.
So we were using a test different from Virginia Beach and Chesapeake?
I can't speak to what they were doing. I, I really couldn't. I was really just focused on us and making sure that we were doing it right.
I don't think they have civil service process, do they, Sharon?
Not that I'm aware of. I think we're one of the few.
I think, yep. That's what I've heard, that we're one of the few that has that process. And it works. It's, it's, it's a good way to check, to make sure that we are being fair and diverse in our hiring practices. It's a, it's a good system. When I said that we not only have a plan, we have a system in place, not only in police and fire, but for the general employees, to make sure that we have diversity. And again, I invite anyone to look around this room, and look at the people in this room, look at the people that have been appointed to leadership positions in the last two years. I'll brag a little bit. They are good, first, they're professionals, and then look at their skin color.
Okay. And the other piece, and this discussion we just had went on for about three or four hours in D.C., and it was a lot of different viewpoints and takes on it, and there was quite a few unanswered questions, and the commissioner just asked everybody to wait until they get the thing to the president's desk, and, and he unrolls the whole piece, because some of the numbers are staggering, and you would be, well, you'd be surprised to know that some cities are doing nothing like this. So, and I started my piece out with saying, I felt good about us, because a lot of the things that he talked about there, we were doing with our police in the community and our fire being at the civic leagues and being out in the communities. Whenever there's a community function, you can always count on seeing a fire truck there with kids and handing out hats and things like that. And I think that's one of the things that Commissioner Ramsey was talking about, more doing those things at the elementary level, so you're getting more people and more kids that want to get into those fields, because a lot of them don't want to get in there. And, and it does come along racial lines because of whatever they're hearing in their homes, or what they think of the police or the fire, and that's what he's talking about, that whole piece. The other one that had great conversation was this whole workforce development. The vice president went into great detail, and the second lady, Dr. Jill Biden, because she's a full-time community college professor, and they talked about making community college free throughout this country. And he know it's an uphill battle. He has ways in his administration with paying for it, with cutting out certain loopholes and some of the inherent taxes and some of those other things. But they compared, and Vice President Biden did that, they compared the United States with other countries and how they prepare their students and what they do in way of education, and how much we have slipped in those areas. And then Secretary Tom Perez, who is the Secretary of Labor, went into a real long discussion about apprenticeships and the federal government getting more involved with working with cities and companies, we're trying to enhance apprenticeship programs. And so you're going to hear a lot more about that, and hopefully in the coming next two years in his administration. And then finally, the last piece was, I think all the mayors agreed on, is this decaying infrastructure throughout this country and how Congress is gridlocked and haven't released the funds for these buildings, highways, bridges, and all of these things that, the report card I think we got this country had was like a C or C minus with infrastructure. And, I mean, it was Democrats, Republicans, all of them want to stop playing politics with this infrastructure, and let's get the building back America and putting folks back to work. And it, and that, that got a huge applause, and, and again, it came from all over the aisle. So this whole infrastructure piece, and, I mean, and every time I heard that, I just think and try to picture the Churchland Bridge. I fish, I'm in my boat, I look up underneath there, and I, I'm telling them, before this last sandblasting and, and priming we did, I mean, it was scary to know that, and there are bridges like that all over this country that cars are going over, that, that, I mean, it just gives you chills. So, so that was the other piece. But again, it was a good conference, and, and like I said, it was, it's always informative, and it's always good to, to talk to other cities. And I try to talk to mother mayors that's urbanized like we are, to see some of the same things, the whole slumlord piece and a lot of workforce development and all of those issues. And it's, it's common, some of them are not doing well, and some of them are trying to fight back. I mean, the Detroit Pontiac, Michigan mayor, she got up and talked about a lot of the things that the president's put in place, and with him saving the auto industry and what it's doing to Pontiac, Michigan, and places like that. And so it was a good meeting. Outside of that, any other reports, anybody?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to follow with city manager. You, you said, look around the room as an indication of the diversity. I'm, I'm not interested in an anecdotal type of analysis. When was the last time there was some type of professional assessment of the diversity of the city employees and positions?
I do that daily, and I'm a professional. And I'm not trying to be cute, but...
That's not what I'm asking, because that's, that's a, that's something that is done typically by some type of outside, outside entity that assesses that. I'm not just talking about from your point of view, because that would have some bias in it. I'm talking about, has there been some type of professional assessment of the diversity in our city?
I beg your pardon, sir.
That's, that's all I ask.
You're welcome to your opinion, but...
No, no, has there been one done?
Let him answer the question, Mayor.
Has there been a study done outside of your personal assessment?
Let's, let's hear the city manager's answer, out of courtesy. What I'd like to do is give you a list of every personnel study that's been done the last 20 years for the city of Portsmouth. Every study that's been imposed by an outside agency like the Department of Justice. And instead of me just standing up here and taking, swatting at, at every missile that comes at me, I think it would be better for everybody to see the long history of what Portsmouth has been doing in the way of recruiting and in the diversity. You, you don't have to, to be ashamed. You don't have to be ashamed. And just like any profession, you get experience by doing, you have ethics, and to say that I am biased is really not the thing to say, folks.
Well, anyone has, you know, their personal view. That's not what I'm asking you. When was the last time a study was...
I just said, I'm going to give you a longitudinal look at 20 years, two decades, of every study that the city of Portsmouth has done that relates to diversity, that relates to recruiting, that relates to anything that has to do with employment and our workforce.
Okay. That's good.
Okay. We need a closed session.
Yep. On that note, somebody want to take us to the close?
I really wish the same kind of conversation goes on with our budget, the die same dialogue.
Move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A29, for the following purpose: Discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion, and discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public voting.
Second.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Dr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semus?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?